We can meet in the whole meeting and we can make a final decision. I don't have a problem there, but I'm supportive of what you're doing.
Yeah, I think we'll just finish the councilors' comments and then we'll move on to our city attorney as well. First, Councilor Johnson, and then on to Councilor Biondich. Councilor Johnson?
Mayor, something Councilor Barabu said I would like some clarification. Is the SHIP-OP assistance not included in the current downtown agreement we have with Nancy?
It is, Counselor.
Okay.
That's part of the administrative side of it.
Okay, so that's so currently we don't have to worry about that. Okay. I just wanted to clarify, I may have misunderstood you, Councilor Barabu, I apologize. And then, so this is a $43,000 a year contract. Don't we need to go out for RFPs to spend that much money on, on, so maybe we don't have to? I guess I would ask Brian. I mean, what, I just, this, this, I have a, when someone comes asking for more money because they're being kind, that's, that, because you use the term exclusive. How long are we exclusive for the term of the contract?
That's correct. This is a one-year contract.
Okay, so then I'm guessing the reason we're exclusive is because when we do this and we do this well, that's one more thing you gentlemen can add to your resume as you go to other cities and go, hey, we helped the city of Virginia and we did this. So I want to be kind of clear that that's also your, that's what's kind of happening a little bit.
Reason, but not the main reason. The main reason, the main reason is that we would have a conflict, severe conflict of interest if we were working for.
No, I. I totally understand that. I just want to make sure that that's part of, you know, because you're a business and you're out to make money. That's why you do this. So I just want to, for my own sake, understand that exclusivity is so that you can, you know, help us, yes, but you're also, if it's successful, you're going to use that in the future as.
Our hope would be that you'd retain us in perpetuity if we're successful.
And I'm well aware of that, and, and I would personally prefer to spend money on a city employee who can be more flexible and do stuff. So, and I have to agree with the mayor about, let's do this first round, this, this downtown and make it successful and, and build what works and what doesn't, and then launch another one. And I would have to support the staff saying it wasn't part of the plan for this year, it wasn't part of the budget. I would much rather prefer to come back and, and have it as part of the plan in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Councilor Biondich?
When would you know if IRRB would be matching that, the funding for?
For, for our proposal?
Yes.
Within a week or two? I mean, once the council makes a determination to move forward, then the staff would sit down with us and Britt and, and determine the dollar amount. So it's kind of like the, putting the cart before the horse here. If you approve the project, then they're, they're going to come in, they're not going to put the money out unless the project is approved.
Okay, so they, we have no guarantee that they would help pay for that? Well, I mean, we're making a decision and then you're going to go to them and ask them?
Correct.
But there's no guarantee that.
Verbally, verbally, I have an agreement that they will participate in this program. I approach them first, and it's a yes, we will. It's just a question of the dollar amount.
The mayor? Yes, Mr. Lampa?
I, I think there's, the one danger that we're kind of sensing here is that you're convoluting the two programs together, the downtown program with an economic development program. They are separate. I mean, what we're doing with the downtown program, the administration, the review of the applicants and everything else is separate from a truly an economic development program where you're out knocking doors and answering leads or bringing businesses here. They're, they are two different things.
Yeah, and, and thank you for that clarification. Before we go to the, our city attorney for some comments, I just have a couple of comments I would like to make. I'm not opposed to having some professional staff from CRD come forward and work on this project and help us try to facilitate some expansion of our economic development throughout the city of Virginia. One of the issues for me is that, you know, if we can get assurances from the IRRB, whether it's through our efforts and through your efforts, and they say, well, you know, if you want to continue with this project with economic development beyond the Main Street, which is separate from what you're asking for today, is that then, you know, we'll commit X amount of dollars to you. If you don't find a way to contract, we're not going to commit the dollars. I think they could say, we'll commit the dollars, you know, if, if, if this program is approved. It'd be nice for us to be able to have that, you know, assurances through the city and then work with CRD and the city and the extra, extra money for the RRRB. And looking at the available funds under the pilot project, $250,000 from the IEEE, which you alluded to, this $250,000 is part of a pilot program, and I agree with you, Mr. Peterson, that we are way ahead of the curve with respect to our economic development pieces in this particular field about getting funding from the IEEE in a pilot project. Here being also, as you indicated before, Mr. Lampa, that there are, they have an economic development individual that works over, I mean, I know he works two days a week in economic, Mr. Torville, he used to be our operations director in Virginia, and so they have other areas moving forward. So, and our city administrator has indicated we don't have the staff to accomplish the, the overall goal and objective of, of doing these recruitments and getting these businesses forward. You know, when, when CRD came to do the downtown business development things, and there was some assurances that CRD would be visiting each individual business and telling you about this program. That didn't happen, although we did have a public hearing, and we had lots of people coming in here, a lot of applications for, that's, so that's been a successful piece. So for me, it's about the budget. It's about how much money we have, how much money we want to leverage moving forward. And so I would like to see you work with our staff within the next week or so, come up with a plan about moving forward, contact the IRRB, figure out, you know, can we get insurance from them that they would approve this project? Because this is a $250,000 pilot project for downtown, this is a pilot project, and there was some conversation that if this was successful, that we would likely be eligible for more funding to expand that program, not only for the downtown, but throughout the city of Virginia. But that brings to bear other communities who are going to, going to be competing for those dollars as well, saying, look what Virginia received. They're moving forward with that. And so these dollars are, are part of that project. And I know CRD has been an integral part in the one-year contact we've had with you about moving forward to try to get some economic, moving forward. We have been fortunate through our city staff to have the opportunity to be able to market some of the downtown businesses. We have several billings, I shouldn't say so, maybe a half a dozen billings that were sold in the downtown, and they're in various stages of remodeling, and hopefully they'll be opening a business sometime in 2020. So that's going to help significantly. Now, I think some of those businesses have applied for some money from, through this program. Now, would you please tell me, if this is accurate, Britt, that the old Century Boarder Freight Building that's being modified by a private business owner who's attracting a new business from another community into Virginia, applied for a variety of, of, of grants from the state, but did that individual apply for one of those $50,000 grants through, that wasn't part of that?
Not in the downtown district, so we can't apply for that.
So, so he, he wouldn't be eligible for that. But under the new agreement, moving forward, if additional fundiers were to be allocated, you know, he, he, that particular business and others would be eligible, which they're not eligible for now. Right, so, okay.
If that's what we choose to do.
Pardon?
If that's what we choose to do.
If that's what we choose to do, right. So I'd be comfortable, I have no problem with CRD as far as their, your professionalism, how you provide your work, the successes that you had in other communities. I look at the liaison things of what you've done here. You have, should have, lost it here for a moment, thank you. You had, I mean, all the, all the community development projects that, that are going on in the downtown. And all the different communities that you had here. You had listed that, you know, that you're working on to date. So, here they got 108 South Fifth Avenue, 215 Chestnut Street, 214, I mean, a lot of these approved, $2,500, $15,000 here, $50,000, $30,000 there. Well, here they are, right here. You got Residential Services, Up North Dental, Clink Building, Lacasina Cantina, W. Fisher was of the Lenora Company, Commercial Refrigeration, you know, and on and on and on, Barber Graphics, all in the downtown core district, which applications have been approved or pending approval at this point in time. So the monies that are allocated in the downtown area are likely going to be eaten up with more applicants, we have funding sources. So my question is, is that would we have to expand the downtown opportunities for those downtown businesses? Because if we, if we approve these, the $500,000 we have that we're leveraging, and that's all taken care of, and there are still applications in, in the core district that have been prioritized as identifying, as if that's being our core district, wouldn't those funds, you know, wouldn't we have an obligation as a city to make sure those funding projects get moved, proved before we went outside the downtown core district, to make sure that every individual who wants to apply for these funds have the opportunity to do so if they're in this core district before we move on to outside the city of Virginia? That's my question. And so I would like to see CRD work with staff and maybe our city attorney, and then come back to us with a recommendation from, from, from the service provision, the priority position, the funding sources that could become available, maybe an assurance from IRRB moving, moving forward. So I'd like to see, have all the information come to all of us so we can have a better opportunity to make an informed decision based upon their proposal, which is, I think is very professional. Before we go to our city attorney, Mr. Peterson?
So, Mr. Mayor, maybe I can.
Thank you.
Add to that a little bit. As far as the downtown area goes, the dollars from the, the IRR that would be added to the budget this year, their budget, that's a program exclusive to downtown. That's the way it was written.
Right. Right.
So those dollars would, unless the agency decides to share or expand that, those dollars could not be shared out of the core.
Right, correct.
So that's something the city would have to decide if they wanted to fund the downtown on their own. So we would be looking at additional dollars from other agencies for other businesses that we brought into this community, infrastructure, commercial or residential redevelopment dollars, all those other dollars that the agencies and DED or some other ARDCs may have available to use. So it's kind of, the downtown is kind of a separate thing, and as, as your administrator mentioned, if the city wants to change that and expand that program, that's up to the city, but the, the agency's dollars are for downtown.
Right, and, and I understand that, and I thank you for the clarification. I might have misspoke a little bit. I know that's just for the downtown, and the, the other funds that we have leveraged is for the downtown as well. But the pilot project is for downtown, $250,000. So if that pilot project money is gone and we show that IRRB, hey, this has been a very successful program, and we want, we want to be able to continue with the, because there was a conversation that might be additional dollars beyond the pilot project if this is a successful program. So my question is, would that extra dollars be focused only to the downtown area to, to finish that pilot project or, or continue to the next phase of the project, or is that, it's something that's going to be expandable throughout? So there are two separate contracts here or two separate entities. So you're looking at economic development for the whole city. Right. The money that we have here is just for, identified only for one specific pilot program, and that's for the downtown. That's what we've leveraged the rest of our dollars for in order to, to meet the goals and objectives and the requirements of the IRRB to make sure we have some matching funds available to, to, to infuse into downtown.
Right, so the downtown project stands on its own, and then the dollars that we would be looking at from the agency for this particular proposal comes out of development partnership, a totally separate program.
So that we, out of, outside the downtown district.
Correct, and, and we would be very, we'd be okay with making it contingent upon us, just making this proposal contingent upon us accessing those dollars, up to $15,000. I mean, we have no problem doing that because I'm, I'm confident we'll be able to get those dollars for the city.
I was hoping there'd be more than that, but I, I understand, I understand, I understand your hard work and your knowledge of the Heters, both of you, the knowledge of the IRRB. Mr. Lampa, did you need?
No, no, I, I was just, Steve brought it up, you know, and I don't think it's changed. When an agency sets up a program, which we were hoping that they do, that next year is set up a downtown rehab program that's going to be larger than the 250, that's going to be more replicable across the Iron Range. Those dollars that are dedicated to that are spent on that program. They're not taken, taken out of there. And what Steve said is correct. I mean, East Range Economic, what do they get? Fifty grand?
Fifty thousand a year.
Fifty grand a year from IRRB to provide economic services to Aurora Heights Lakes, Towneau Eight, and Aurora. And they get 50 grand for, for the same purpose of this. So, you know, that could be a bargaining tool for us to increase that 15 grand a little bit as well.
That would be, that was going to be my argument next, you know, after, yeah, so, yeah, that's what, that's the kind of path I was on.
And I think, you know, after the, the discussions that we have with the city staff and we all have somewhat of an agreement to move forward, I think it is important that, you know, the city councilors that have relationships with IRRB and yourself, Mayor, and with board members, is that we get proactive and talking to them and saying that this is really important to the city of Virginia so that when the applications are made, it's a lot easier process to get, get approved.
Thank you very much. I guess we have a couple more councilors before we get to you, Brian, okay? Councilor Paulson?
I'm sorry, Brian.
Councilor Paulson, and then again, I think Councilor Barabu once again. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I agree, I, I think it's compartmentalized. I think the downtown project is, is a separate entity, and, and business recruitment is separate. And I'm very interested in business recruitment. I think that's a, a big thing that we have a gap right now. And I think for the last couple of years, I've talked about, you know, do we need a city planner, maybe slash economic developer? When John left, I think that, that was kind of a hole. And I'm not saying anything about administratively or whatever, I just feel like, but for me, I would rather drill down on what is our marketing message? Like, are we still the Queen City? Are we the City of the Loon? Like, I think we need to drill down a little bit, and then we also need to, you know, we need to work, like when the Humphreys students came, and I've said this so many times, and they, they brought forward those, those NICS codes, and that's, it's all in a spreadsheet. I mean, I would like to understand what we want to recruit, like what services are we missing? And that's, I mean, I don't know if that's kind of how your approach would be, but maybe we could develop like a task force along with maybe some VIDA members to kind of drill down on what actually our city needs and where we want that focus. You know, when you go to residential this, or this, this, and this, like, I think that's just too broad for me. I would rather kind of hone in on really what our city needs, and we're real, in my opinion, we need a retail tax base or manufacturing tax base or whatever that looks like. For me, that's what I would rather see recruitment to Virginia, or, or things, you know, after Herbergers left, like what, what holes are here and how can we fill those holes? And I don't know if that would be part of the plan, but I think I would, I would like to see maybe a task force developed so that we could kind of just say, what is our messaging here? And I, and I do know, I mean, after talking to Commissioner Phillips, you know, Virginia is going to be that model. So I would rather give us all the tools that we need to be successful within what they want to look at as Virginia being this successful model. So I don't know if that makes sense to you, but.
Counselor, it does, and you have a comprehensive plan.
We do.
And that's what you defer to. And the comprehensive plan outlines what the direction the city should be looking at. And I think you've all agreed that the comprehensive plan is kind of the Bible. It's kind of your charter. It's kind of whatever you want to call it. So we would work with that plan, work with VIDA, and determine the best outcome for the city. So what businesses, you, you can't bring an Amazon to the city of Virginia. We all know that.
Oh, come on now.
We would like to, but you have to look at the employees. You have to look at the number of people in the regions. You have to look at the educational things, the transportation, all of those things. And that's something we did at the agency. We, we have all of those demographics there, and they're all available. Economic development, bringing businesses is, is a very tough, tough. Economic development, bringing businesses is, is a very tough, tough, you know, that word is just splattered all over the place. There's a lot of handholding, there's a lot of courting, and you don't get them all. You're not going to get them all. You're, you're lucky if you get one out of 100, but if you're not out there trying, your odds are even less.
And I totally agree with you. I just, I feel like we've got the MECC coming forward, we've got opportunities for hotel, restaurant, we've got the school project, you know, maybe grocery store, convenience stores for the kids, or whatever that might look like in that midway area.
Public service, building, I mean, you've got a lot of things.
So I guess I'm looking at, there's a lot of different recruitment potential and needs. I would like to see a plan developed, and I would like to see part of us within our, within this body and with VITA, maybe develop what that looks like. And I, and I'm not trying to say I'm not in agreement with going forward with some sort of a contract. I think I would be more comfortable seeing, having people come together and seeing what, what our focus should be or where we want to focus, and then execute that. And I, and I hope you can appreciate.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Paulson. Councilor Bearbo?
Yeah, I think we're just beating this to death. I think the CRD people should meet with their, our staff, put together something for the council meeting, if you can do it in a week, to talk about this. By then you may know if you're going to get any dollars out of the IRRB. We can do a contingent upon all that stuff happening. Also, we don't have to go out, Steve, for, for bids on this. That's ludicrous, when we already have professionals, and we can do it as a professional service. So we don't have the control that we have to, and I believe we can go up to $100,000 now, that we don't have to go out for bids if we have a professional service under, under that. So that's my point on this. And with that, Mr. Attorney, if there's nobody else, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes, we'd like to, I'd like to, we would like to refer to Brian for some comments.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll keep my comments brief, and I don't mean to, to bog the, the conversation down, and these may be preliminary things. But I just wanted to, to give some information or touch on a couple of points that if the contract were to be signed, there's a couple of technical things that I'd like to address prior to ratification or signing. The first is, with a contract like this, I think it's always preferable to have a data practice statement, because you would be contracting with the city, there would be some interplay with the Data Practices Act. I always find it's a good practice. I'd also like to take a quick look, if we were going to move forward, if the city does move forward, with the expense reimbursement language specifically related to the mileage. Your contract, your proposed contract does have some, some language, some good language relative to the status of the relationship. I might have some suggestions just to tighten that up a little bit. And then the other issue, while I understand the, the conflict of interest that can develop, I think in, in terms of an independent contractor relationship, we've got to be a little bit careful about using the terms exclusivity. And so we may just, instead of exclusivity, we may use instead a conflict of interest clause or something like that. Those are my only comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, Councilor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would actually like to move to form a task force, and I don't know exactly what that, who that would include, but I would like to move that city staff be directed to form a task force, not, I guess, similar to what we did with the shared fire services, to move forward with continuing discussion with CRD.
Would you like to, from VITA, to from council? And then, would you like CRD to be part of the task force too? That's wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, moved by Councilor Paulson. Is there support? Support by Councilor Johnson? Is there any further discussion? One thing for me, this task force will be determined, I would, I would have staff work on, and then maybe, once you come up with a, a formula, we ask for two counselors to sit, get that taken care of. Thank you, yep, thank you very much. Further discussion first to Councilor Baranzelli.
Thank you, Mayor.
Steve, earlier you said there were 14 people interested, or are they still hot? Are they, do they want to move in on this?
Yes, they're ready to go. I mean, there's, how many are coming to VITA, Britt?
Another six.
Another six, so.
Are these the ones that came from that meeting at the Elks?
Correct.
Three or four months ago?
Correct.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Hey, thank you. Councilor Bearbo?
Just one thing, Julianne. I don't want this to take forever. I think we need to put a time limit on, on this particular thing so it doesn't take forever. And I also like if we have a task force, I don't want to see people that are on the same signs on this task for, on this project. I want to see if we're going to have two people, one on the positive side, one on the negative side, to move forward at this point in time. I think it's only fair.
Okay, I guess I don't know what that means, positive or negative, but you could explain that a little bit.
Well, it means, it means that the people like myself that want to push it forward and not sit on it forever, and there may be some other people on the council that feel the same way, or in a neutral position, I don't care. But the people that want to sit on this and not move forward, that should be one of the people, and somebody that is favorable to this, even though we may not have the budget for it.
Okay, yeah, I, I think we're all, with all due respect, an elected body, so we can figure out who those two are. We won't, you know until a task force makes a decision and, and a, and a decision moving forward, but I agree, it has to be rather, relatively quickly. And what are your thoughts, Councilor Paulson, about having this done within the next couple weeks? Right? Try to put a timeframe on there, Councilor Bearbo, and, and try to get this moving forward in, in a way that we can have, have an informed document, informed decision, information from other funding sources that are available, the leverage for the IRRB from $12,000 to, you know, it could be more. I mean, we, you know, we need to do that, so that task force can help facilitate that with the, with the inclusion and participation of CRD. Is that, is that something that?
Well, I think we should have something ready to go by the next committee, the whole week, call in two weeks, and then if we need to act or can act, the following week, so it'd be a three-week timeframe total.
Yeah, that's reasonable, I think, is, would that be, is that attainable, Britt? Okay, Councilor Paulson? Okay, moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, and then part of that is working at the, the suggestions made by our city attorney as well. So all-inclusive and involving, Mr. Peterson?
Thank you.
Mr. Lampa, thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is CRD also of the request for addendum to contract with CRD for the downtown redevelopment project. This is you again, Steve. This is the addendum to the contract. My understanding is the contract for, is for downtown is for $37,500 based on the understanding we were only going to get $35,000, $350,000. We actually have $500,000, so it's increasing up to $50,000. Is that correct?
That is correct. Dick is not able to attend this meeting, and that's kind of his deal, but he was unaware, or we were unaware of the extra $200,000 that the city had available for the program. So it's just based on a straight percentage.
Based on estimating 10 projects?
Hmm, correct. Just a per-project increase. It's, it's not any additional dollars for what we had initially talked about.
Well, I guess, I don't know what the, I don't recall, I don't have the contract in front of me.
In the packet.
For, as far as the percentage goes, for the additional, additional.
It was 10% per project.
So they're asking for 10% of the?
If they do more than, more than the initial, they initially thought we weren't doing 10, they thought we were doing five or six. Now that we're doing 10 projects.
Okay, Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Wasn't the original language up to?
Up to 37,500.
So we're being asked to amend that?
Up to 50,000.
Okay, but it was, in the original contract, it was up to?
Correct, and that was based on the number of projects. Now the number of projects have increased.
Okay, thank you.
Did, when, when we got the additional money, did we anticipate that there would be an increase of the fees, Britt?
That we anticipated? We do have, we do have extra monies in the, in the fund that we could pay for, that wouldn't come out of the city budget, it'd come out of what we levied.
And does staff have a recommendation as to how we should move forward? Or does VITA have? I mean, because this is still connected to VITA, correct?
Connected to VITA, yes, yes. I do think that they should be compensated for doing additional projects. We have 14 applications, which is way, well, 14 successful applications. There may be more coming in that we have not even reviewed yet. So there will be additional work above and beyond the completed projects just to start that waitlist, who's ready, where they're at, and what they're doing. I don't think it's unreasonable.
I will move the proposal up to the 10% of the $500,000 as a total project.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Councilor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support, Councilor, freely, any further discussion? It just makes sense. You're, you're, you're getting paid for X amount of projects based on a percentage. There's more money available for more projects, so an adjustment to the contract is, is, is reasonable and prudent, and we have the funding out of VITA to do it. So is there any further discussion on this matter? Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So we're, again, going up to a certain amount. Like, I feel like if we're going to do it, we should just say 10% of the project. I mean, if that's what it's, like, because I mean, we're amending the original, we didn't, I, I suppose you probably didn't know what you would anticipate getting back, but I feel like we're going to probably have to come back to the table on this again, if we get more than.
We would hope.
So.
Yes.
So I mean, I, I just feel like instead of coming back, if we just say 10%, it is what it is. I guess that's my feeling.
Yeah, well, I, I like to do, with the contract, it's for up to $500,000, that's all the money we have. You know, if we get more money, then I think it's, we have to reevaluate the contract, depending upon how much money we get. But I think the premise makes, this makes sense. Okay, is there any further discussion before we move forward? Councilor Bearbo?
Yeah, I, I agree with that concept. We don't extend it past, Julianne, the dollars that we have, otherwise we've got an open book.
Hey, thank you. It's been moved and supported to extend the addendum to the contract with CRD for downtown redevelopment program with a reimbursement of 10% from 37,500 up to $50,000 under that program. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Lampa?
Next item on the agenda is Dana Hiltonan from the HRA regarding the project needs of Pine Mill Court. And I think you do have your annual information, too?
Right, so, good morning, Mayor and councilors. We're actually here to talk about, I think, a couple of things. One is the Washington Manor budget for this coming year, and then the other was to go over the letter that I had sent back to the council and mayor last October regarding Pine Mill Court. Do you have a preference, Mr. Mayor, of where we start?
Well, let's start with the projects first, and then I think we'll drill down as, as the acronym goes for, Councilor Paulson, we'll drill down to the budget secondly, so. Thank you. All right.
I think the Pine Mill Court discussion will probably not be lengthy anyway. So I had sent a letter, I had talked to Bill Henness and Britt last October, I had sent a letter to the mayor, who also asked that it be sent out to the council, just about the condition of infrastructure over on Pine Mill Court. And I think that caused maybe a little confusion in my letter. So I had talked in there about how the HRA has been doing some strategic planning, and one of the priorities that we have in our strategic planning is trying to improve, you know, some of our buildings, Pine Mill Court being one of them, and the exterior, obviously we have not had enough capital money over the years to keep Pine Mill Court up. And so this is one thing that we're going to be trying to focus on. And we have been able to receive some additional state money to do a project this coming summer. And while we were looking at those during our strategic planning, the discussion came up also about the streets, the sidewalks, those things over on Pine Mill Court. So really, that's all the letter was about, just trying to bring to your attention, hey, over on Pine Mill Court, the streets and sidewalks, and after talking with Bill Henness, some of the infrastructure with the sewer lines and things like that are pretty bad over in that area. And I, I believe from talking with Britt, there was some discussion about whether or not that's owned by the city or not. So I think that's where the confusion came in. And so the street and sidewalks over there are city-owned and maintained. And, and like I said in the letter, too, the, the city does a really good job. Anytime we do have a problem, they come over, they try to address it, but it's just aging. And I know that you've been going through a process of prioritizing different roads in towns and things like that. So all it was, was to just bring attention that, you know, if you're looking at, if you're looking at city roads, if you're looking at sidewalks, please take a look at what's going on in Pine Mill Court, too, and just keep it in the back of your mind for when you are prioritizing. That's all. Any questions about that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Bearbo?
Dana, I am probably remiss, I did see that letter at one time, and we are going to be working on this spring, I don't know exactly when, it's going to be pretty quick with a, looking at a big bonding program for roads and streets. I will see that this project gets added to that list, whether it actually becomes a reality with this program, I mean, we have, what, 13 streets right now, about $1 million worth of work. So, no, it's more than that, that we're going to be doing in the, in the future, starting in 2021. So we'll have some meetings here this spring, and we'll notify you when we're going to have those meetings.
I appreciate that.
Okay, because I am a street and alley chair, so we're, we're going to, I'll add this to it, so we can take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bearbo. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I do, I guess I have a question, and I, I think it maybe is for our administration. Is it possible to work with the county or request Minnesota state aid extensions? It's a county population potentially that's, that this is affecting?
I'm not sure if, I, I don't, you know, you're going to be better at knowing if county aid is something for that road, or whether CDBG is something that maybe you want to look at.
CDBG just discussed this, because Chisum HRA just came to CDBG, and they just ruled that they cannot fund.
They cannot?
No, but that doesn't mean the rest of the county can't. So something I can have Matt and Bill Henness start looking at.
I, I think we should approach the county and just see what kind of dollars they could possibly put forward.
If they can't use CDBG, what can they use?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Paulson.
Sorry, just one comment about that, too. There also may be a difference between an HRA coming to CDBG for publicly owned, like public housing or other buildings that they own versus, like, just their streets or infrastructure that aren't HRA-owned, too.
Correct, and I think that was where the gap was, yes.
Okay, so that's maybe something, too, I can talk to Steve Nelson about, too, and get his opinion on that.
Very good, thank you. Okay, let's move on to your next topic.
Okay.
Which is the Washington Manor, Washington Manor budget. Thank you.
Right, so it is budget time. So as you know, I think you've all been through this with us before, our fiscal year starts on April 1st, and so we usually come to you, present a Washington Manor budget for the coming year, look at possible rental rates, and, and then also talk about a couple of capital projects. So I have with me today Jesse Lind, which I believe you've, most of you have met before, he's our finance manager, and then Gigi Grahec is here, too, in case you end up having any operations questions that I can't answer about Washington Manor. So Jesse will go over the budget that's in your packet. You probably saw in your packet a few other things we usually put in there, what rental rates have gone up over the past few years so that you can have a comparison. We show you how things have been going with occupancy, which has been going quite well, I think. And then, obviously, there's some capital stuff in there that I'll talk about after, too.
Thank you. Good morning, Jesse.
Good morning.
Welcome.
So I'll be going over the Washington Manor budget for March 31st, 2021. Looks like this, colorful one. The first column is the current budget for fiscal year 33120. Last year about this time, the councilors approved a $10 increase to cable. The next column is the proposed, um, 33121 budget with a no-rent increase. The green column is a 1% rent increase. The purple is a 1.5% rent increase. The red is a 2% rent, rent increase, and the orange is the, a flat $15 to everyone's rent.
Quick question, uh, as, as, lead the foundation. What are, what are the rental rates right now?
Um, the range?
Range.
Uh, at the low end, it's $700, and then at the high end, it's $1,056.
Thank you.
Um, so, total operating revenues are ranging between $673,000 for a no-rent increase, and at the high end, 2% increase at $686,000. Total admin expenses went up by about $4,000 to $47,305. Total utilities remained pretty much the same at $82,575. Total maintenance expenses went up about $6,000 to $182,90. Total general expenses increased by about $1,300 to $29,160. Capital improvements remain the same at $50,000. Total net operating income ranged from $282,000 at the no-rent increase to $295,89 at the 2% rent increase. The debt service for this budget is $275,930. And for a no-rent increase, the net income is $6,0612. For a 1% rent increase, it's $12,885. For a 1.5, it's $16,023. For a 2% rent increase is $19,159. And for a 15, flat $15, it's $17,45. Also in your packet, there's a, there's a rent history that shows the increases from 1997 to current. It's this one. Any questions?
I do, Jesse, before we move on to other councilors here, I think Councilor Johnson will be, well, we'll go to Councilor Johnson first. Councilor Johnson?
So when I deal with budgets, I always like to look at the previous year. Where did we end 1819 with the net profit loss?
I think we, I don't have that in front of me. I got the current, the current year in front of me right now.
Okay.
Um, so far, the net operating income is at $252,638. And budgeted was $29362. Um, this is as of November 30th, and we haven't went through the winter months for utilities. So.
I guess that's something, you know, looking at this, this spreadsheet for the proposals, um, I'm looking at the, the bottom number down there, that's 17,006. And I guess what I'm looking at is, how does that compare? I, I need something to base on, do we need to increase rent, um, based on what we did last year and the year before and the year before? That, that's where I'm at. Is, is there a need to increase rent, or are we raising rent? To raise rent?
I think that we've been coming pretty spot on with our budgets. Maybe on, maybe a little bit better than what we've projected, but pretty close.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would request that, that, in the future, that we have something to, something solid that actually happened, so we compare it for the sake of comparison, that, so that when I get asked by your, your renters, which I can get, talk to some of them frequently, um, we can say, yeah, your money is all being used, there's a little bit left over that if somebody breaks a window, or, you know, just so there's a something to compare to, because, um, you know, the, the raising of the rent, it, it needs to happen, I get that, and last year we settled on the $10 cable fee, which was easy to explain, but moving forward, um, if we're raising rent, I'd like to know why, and, and have a good example.
I think there's a, uh, may I? I think there's a few things that you may wanna consider when you're talking about that. So one is, when Jesse prepares the budget, he not only looks at what our budget was last year, but then, obviously, he looks at expenses up until now to project, and then two past years to determine what the budget should be. And when you see the budget and you don't see huge changes in the line items next to them, then that tells you it's pretty consistent. I think another couple things that you may wanna think about when you're talking to people is that, um, one, you, you really should always have at least four months of operating in your reserves, um, because we know while this project is done really well, I think, over the past number of years, there were some times where it did not do well, and you need those reserves in there so that the city doesn't have to come up with money to operate Washington Manor, at, at least in my opinion. And then the other thing is, is that, you know, from, um, past meetings, we have an onslaught of capital needs. So you really do also need to try to continue to build up that capital, that reserve, so that you do have some larger chunks of money to try to address some of those beyond the whole regular operating capital needs that you have, like breaking the window or something like that. So to me, in my mind, those are the few reasons that you really look at, um, you know, what you're charging for rent, what expenses are going up, but then also those other outliers, too, if that helps.
Thank you.
A couple of questions and maybe a couple comments, too. I know you have some capital equipment needs, and you need to have a reserve in order to accomplish those goals, whether it's regular maintenance capital needs, or it's an additional capital needs. And the, and the one big capital need that comes to mind is the generator that had to be installed a few years ago to Washington Manor. Yeah, maybe there are some other assisted living places and other senior housing that do not have that secondary capability, but we own that building, and we had to put a new generator in, and that was a significant expense. Without reserves, you know, I, I'm not really sure if any city money went in to help accommodate that, but I think that we, we had, there was enough adjustment in the, in the capital reserves in order to accomplish the installation of that, which was significantly, it was a very expensive item. Not to say that you'd have that every year. So the second thing for me is about the rent increases, you know, I mean, you look at it, oh, it's only $6 or $15, but it's, it's a lot of money for these people. And so when we weigh the cost of increasing rent, to the, with the capital needs, try to offset those costs, are, are, are the individuals living in, in the Washington Manor, are some of them gonna be, uh, not able to afford that? You know, maybe $15 is a lot for all of us, but it could be, you know, critical for some, you know, essentially, needs that they have. So that's a consideration we always have. But I guess the comment I'm gonna make is, wouldn't it be nice? Wouldn't it be nice if it didn't have to come before the city council on this budget every year? I'm sure you're working on a plan so you don't have to do that anymore. But until such time, as that comes to fruition, we, we have to address this issue, so, thank you, Dana. Any other comments, or, uh, Councilor, uh, Councilor Bearbo?
Dana, just a quick question, and it's not, uh, on your budget part, but the structural repair things that are going on with that building, where is that sitting right now? Because that, and what's the current cost estimate on that?
So, um, you may, you may remember, we went over a physical needs assessment in the past, and that number is actually quite high. But we have two priorities that I think, um, I'd like to just chat with you about today. And so in your packet, there was also a letter from Finn Daniels, who's our architect. So there's two things that, that, um, kind of are on top of the list this year. And so one is the window sills, and you may remember, we talked kind of at length about that when we went over the physical needs assessment last year. So this last summer, after Britt and I had talked, we did issue, um, the HRA issued a small contract to have a contractor come out, and actually, we had to remove a window with our architect on site, and then also went up and removed a few different sills to really get a better idea of what was going on, and maybe why some of those issues were happening with settling. That, so these window sill issues are mostly happening in the addition, they are happening in the addition of the building. You have a wood-framed building with a brick exterior there, and after so many years, you have some issues with, um, wood shrinking versus a very small amount of expansion in that brick, and that has caused some settling of those issues, which actually then resulted in some of those sills popping off on the exterior of the window. Um, and so I know we talked about that quite a bit. So we did, like I said, we had this exploratory contract, went through, took a look at that, and then, um, there were some recommendations that were made. And so you can see that in your letter.
Mm-hmm.
About that. We have a probably, we're looking at a project cost estimated between $95,000 and $100,000, which should include architectural engineering fees and a small contingency. And then the other issue that I think, um, we need to kind of look at is, we have some terracotta cornice on the old part of the school, that, um, our architect was up on the roof and saw some mortar pieces that have been falling off.
Similar to what happened at the library.
Onto the roof, and so, obviously, we're trying, um, we'll have a restoration contractor come up and take a look at that, somebody who's more experienced, uh, with that type of restoration, just to see how bad that is, not bad that is. I mean, we just wanna make sure, too, that we don't have any kind of safety issue up there with that cornice. It's old, it's, you know, we wanna make sure that it stays intact. So those are the two top. I think that the window sill is, um, probably like one of the number-one issues to move forward with. So to give you an idea, I set a budget of around $95,000 to $100,000. In your city-held reserves, uh, Jesse was talking to Wendy this morning, there's $571,000 in there, but you have a bond payment due. So, um, it probably puts you at around $300,000 after the bond is, um, paid. And then we are also holding another $70,000 in reserves. So if you take out of there at least having four months of operating reserves on hand at all time, you know, you're looking in the $250,000 to $270,000 range that you have available for some projects. If you agree with that, I mean, I mean, that's how we look at it with our projects, so.
Okay. Right, Cherry? Thank you, Dana. Uh, Councilor Bearbo?
That, that was the reason I asked, uh, that question, because those repairs, if we just continue to let those, uh, go, they're only gonna get more costly. So did you just have the one architectural firm looked at this, I'm assuming?
Yeah, so.
And are they gonna increase the strength of those sills and stuff, or leave them the same type of aluminum sills and stuff? Are they gonna increase the headers?
They'll actually reset those windows. So he kinda gives an explanation in the, um, in the letter, in your packet, too. And we do, we work with Finn Daniels, the, we've tend to worked with the architect of the HRA. We issue an RFQ every five years for an architect, and then that's who we use for five years on our projects. So we did only have our architect, um, look at it with the contractor.
My personal opinion, Dana, I think you should go out on that and get some RFPs with the structural work that's been done, bring that back to the council, and then we can decide if we're gonna take the reserves to fix that. That would be my recommendation.
That you want us to go out?
I think you need to do it, because there's water running down behind.
Oh, right, so you're saying, go ahead, plan the project, go out, not an RFP, but go out and bid the project, right? Okay.
That's what I meant, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just wanna, yeah.
And, and you anticipated you'd do that, because according to the letter from Finn Daniels, that, uh, you, you were weather-dependent, you, you would anticipate potential work on that project beginning in April or May 2020?
Right, we would go out for bid, see where the bids come back in. I, I think the one thing about the window sills right now is that, um, they are acting like they should, like, there's water coming down and flowing down behind, which is how the building is designed to work, should you have a failure of a window sill. But we don't want that to continue, and then have other issues that are caused, you know, with the brick on the exterior of the building either. So we are trying to prevent it from becoming a bigger issue than it already is right now.
Thank you. Councilor Paulson?
Mayor, um, first of all, I just wanna say congratulations on the vacancies. I mean, I know, like, probably three or four years ago, when we talked about this, those numbers were higher, so you guys are doing a really good job. And I guess the question that I have, Dana, is, what, what are you coming forward recommending in terms of rent?
On rent increases?
Mm-hmm. What would your, or what are you guys recommending?
Um, so when I look at this budget, if this were an HRA-owned project, I would probably tell our board that you need to be in the 1% to 1.5% range, at the very least.
Hi, Larry, I'm just calling.
Jeez, man, oh, man, sorry.
And I, I agree with the mayor, um, nobody ever wants to do rent increases, but the fact is, is that expenses do go up, operating goes up, um, you have increases to pay for. And you can see on the second page that Jesse already referred to, um, showing how much rents have increased since 97. And then on the bottom, you can also see proposed rent increases, and then it's kind of, I think, a little easier to read here, you can see the ranges of where you're currently at, and then what it would be if you did a 1, 1.5, 2, or a flat 15. To give you maybe a comparison, um, the HRA is raising rent over at Laurentian Manor this year 2%. We don't, we aren't always, though, Laurentian and Washington are not always hand-in-hand by any means, we look at the budget separately. And there have been years where Washington has increased more and, and Laurentian less, and vice versa. So, and those rents over there are $799 to $1,077. I also contacted Lincoln Place over in Eglis, just for another comparison, because I think those are very similar types of units. They're $899 to $1,099, um, with their tenants also paying their electric, and their tenants have to pay cable separately as well, and $50 for indoor parking if they have it. So.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Bearbo?
Yeah, I was going to just make a motion that we take a look, and my motion would be that we allow a 1.5% increase in, in rents, 11 for the low end and 16 for the top end. The flat fee, I, I just don't like flat fees, but, uh, I would, uh, go with the 1.5%, so that'd be my motion.
Okay, motion by Councilor, uh, Bearbo to approve the request by HRA to increase the rental rates at the Washington Manor by 1 and 1.5%. Is there support? Is there support? Is there support? Support by Councilor Johnson for discussion, further discussion. Councilor Johnson?
I'm, I'm, have questions moving forward about, I see steam is still listed, um, for this, what's gonna happen over the next year and a half, two years? What's the plan?
I've been informed in the past that steam will continue to run to Washington Manor, that it's in the main corridor, and that it will not be shut off.
That is our understanding as well, yes.
And my other question is, uh, well, have you seen a decrease in the steam cost since that was supposed to have happened as we move forward?
Yes.
Okay, good. And then, um, as we move forward with the, um, window sills, will that help with efficient energy efficiency, repairing some of that stuff, or is it a?
Not really.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilor Johnson. Moved and supported, once again, to raise the rental rates at Washington Manor based on a request from HRA, motion by Councilor Bearbo, supported by Councilor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And then, do we need a motion to go out on bid, to plan for a project and go out on bid on window sills?
That would be really good.
Okay.
To get you going, because I've been reading, hasn't read the letter. Contractors are very hard to get, and the earlier we can get to them, the better.
Councilor Bearbo? Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Councilor Johnson?
I will move that we move forward, um, bids.
Uh, Councilor Johnson moves forward to send out for bids for the window sill repairs at Washington Manor, is there support?
I was gonna make the motion by support.
A motion by Councilor Johnson, support by Councilor Bearbo, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is the shortest budget discussion we've had in a long time.
It is. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Thank you, Jesse. Thank you, Gigi. Okay.
If it's okay, I'd like to deviate for a moment. We have the fire department here that wants to speak to the council. Let's take a minute?
Let's take a break, we're, for a couple minutes, and then we'll be right, then we'll be right back, and we'll hear from you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Brian, we're gonna jump over you.
Yeah, we just need a, uh, need a little breather. While you're waiting, there's coffee in the back, and, uh, some other unhealthy sustenance.
Before we start on the miners, we do have the representatives from the fire department here that want to speak to the council. If we can squeeze them in really quick.
Yeah, Chief Lewis and Fire Marshal Chris Clark. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, counsel. So before I let Chris answer any specific questions about kind of property code, code maintenance orders, I want to give just kind of a brief overview of what the fire department's done. So last year, per St. Louis County dispatch, we responded to 4,463 calls, that's an average of 12 a day, remembering about three of those a day are transports from our hospital facilities to Duluth. So that's the highest number of calls that we've ever had. In doing the highest number of calls that we've had, we also had one of the lowest fire losses on record. Our fire loss for last year was about $250,000. That's even though we were called to fires 50 times, only about 16 of those were actual structure fires in the city of Virginia and 12 of those fires were residential. So when you think about that in context, we've had dollar losses exceeding millions, in the millions of dollars in the past. So for us to have a fire loss of $250,000 for a population that is, you know, 8,712 people is literally half, we've had half of the fires that communities, that are half of our population have had. So we've had less fires, we've had less dollar loss in surrounding communities. A lot of that I attribute to Fire Marshal Clark and his work. A lot of that I attribute to you folks in the council for hiring a fire marshal and for supporting the code programs that we have, the education programs that we have. And some of you have benefited personally in businesses from interactions with our fire marshal. So keeping that in mind, the goal of the fire department is not just to put out fires and not just to respond to medical emergencies, but we have a duty to our citizens to prevent these things from happening in the first place. One of the ways that we do this is through, you know, education, through engineering changes, whether it's, you know, low heat burners, whether it's, you know, automatic extinguishers that we put in the vent hoods that have stopped cold fires, whether it's the Ivy Manor remodel that literally presented, you know, upwards, you know, of a million dollar loss, had that structure gone. And that was, that was through some economic development programs that encouraged safer behavior. So I want to talk about why we do what we do and not just what we do. So to prevent life loss and to have a more safe community. Some of the ways that we do that is through code enforcement. But that enforcement always has the goal to be a corrective and a behavioral modification. It is not punitive in nature. We are not the fire police that go around looking to cite people and close down businesses. Some of the scuttle that I have heard recently from members of the community that are very, very concerned about what will an international property maintenance code mean, what will a rental code mean? And they have all kinds of horrific tales about people's businesses being shuttered and the tax base dissolving and they're going to move somewhere else. And I, I've heard the, you know, the sob stories. And so what we want to do is come and present a factual, kind of our philosophy in how we go about those. To date, nobody has been fined, nobody has, you know, we have issued corrective orders, but those have always taken a process to bring about that desired change. And all of our codes, our fire codes are, as we say, they're written in blood. There is a reason those codes exist. There is a reason exit signs are supposed to be posted. There is a reason occupancy loads are supposed to be posted. There is a reason fire escapes. All of those people died and they said, why did they die? This could have prevented it. So these codes are not just, you know, people making up things. There is a reason each of these exists. So I thought that overview would be helpful and I'll just kind of defer to Chris Clark or myself for any questions that the council might have in regards to codes, fire department questions in general and kind of what we see as our role in this and our vision. But it's to encourage a healthy, happy community that is safe and is definitely not to cite people or to shut down businesses. And I think anyone who's had experience dealing with our marshal Clark knows that education is a key component of that personal interaction. It is not, it is not based on just enforcement, but it is based on educating and modifying behavior and even finding economic programs that help these people develop ways to, because what's basic, electrical is very expensive, plumbing, you know, can be very expensive sometimes. But the cost of not doing anything outweigh the cost. Questions?
Just one comment. I'd like to say, you know, we rely on the importance of safety and security within our community regardless of what venue it comes. This is just one of them. The commitment made for property maintenance code, the fire code, the vacant building code, all is, is providing the opportunity and the necessity to keep this a more safe and secure environment. And your statistics show that that's working. I know that Fire Marshal Clark, you'll have a busy schedule moving forward with public presentations and clarifications on this. There've been, there've been a variety of organizations that have asked you to come and speak. And so I know in addition to your other duties and responsibilities, there'll be something moving forward. But we, we did talk with our city administrator and the fire chief, Lewis, about the fact that who's the person that's more, most informative can provide the most consistent message about these ordinance going into place, particularly the fire court orders, the vacant building orders, and that would be you. That is your responsibility. You've taken on that responsibility as a fire marshal and you're going to have a busy few months coming up. So we're relying on you to give that consistent message moving forward. So thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Birabu?
Yeah, Chris, just a quick question for you and maybe this could be addressed through our administration. The vacant building thing we've done with the fees and stuff that we put together, I've had questions from at least six real estate individuals right now about buildings that they have listed, but they're still empty and they've been empty for a period of time. Are we charging them?
Yes.
The fees? Why are we doing that? They don't think that's right because they're really not empty because they've got them listed for sale. I think that's an inconsistency in that particular code that we put together. Because they, they, that makes it a detriment for them and for the individuals trying to sell that building. Now, would put them on the list. Now, do we start January 1 with that first fee for the whole year or we go until December 31st, give them a grace period to start that fee? That's a question I have also. I've been, I've been hit by individuals with these buildings pretty hard.
All right, to address that, so we do have a meeting with the Realtor Association coming up here-
Okay.
-to help address and get that out. I think to date, Bill Cole has about six to 10 buildings on the registry at this point in time. Yes, we want to keep those, but we have a clause in there for that 30 days and then they need to start looking at that. With some of these, we get some of these real estate folks that are selling these properties and we don't necessarily know how to get ahold of them. So we want that building after that 30 days. So if there is an issue because utilities are typically left on, those types of things, the fees are pretty minimal on that. So that's our consistent message in Brit. Add on to this, or Brian. But that's where we're trying to make sure that if we do have problems with this, we know what that status is because a lot of times we'll see the short sale type of things go into play. They're going to post this building and what happens if it's not registered, then it goes into a foreclosure point and then all of a sudden it's caught up in wherever between a bank and a Realtor and that ownership and we lose that. And I know we've had that discussion before, Charlie, with, you know, the Land Explorer and that's not always the be all, end all that gives us that information. So we're having to track down who actually has ownership or, or control of that property. So when we do have an incident, whether it's a blight, whether it's a squatting issue, whatever it is, we're working on that and I think those are going to be some of the kinks as this rolls out. We'll kind of find that path. So there's some growing pains with that. So I hope that answers that question.
I'm pleased to hear that you're going to meet with those individuals and I don't have an issue at all finding out who are the actual owners of these buildings. I have to tell you that because we don't have, we don't have a clue and they need to be addressed for fires and other things. And I think we need to go a step further on those buildings. We need to force them to put lock boxes that we ask you guys to get into those without busting stuff down.
All that, all that has a lot of parameters for us and we're working on that. And I guess I can assure you that it's, it's an evolving process and we're going to have some learning curves as we roll this.
You answered my question. Thank you very much.
Dave, the comment.
Thank you, Counselor Birabu. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, do you, you want me to defer to-
That's the danger of bringing bagels.
Should I go to Counselor Biotis first?
Okay.
Okay, very good.
I do, I actually think that maybe we could look back at this language and tweak it a little. From my perspective and after talking with probably three Realtors, you know, we, for the, for people that winter or snowbird, so they're going basically, I would say from like October to April, and I understand exactly what you're saying, you want that list, but I feel like maybe as a listing, as a real estate listing, there could be an actual timeframe on that, maybe like a year or, I mean, I don't, or whatever that might look like. I feel like 30 days is, just one example that, that I was given was that this spouse had passed away, the other spouse was in assisted living and they were working with the kids to sell the home. And, you know, I think the Realtor was trying to coordinate everything and then there was some confusion. Should this be on this list or is it, are we going to get fined if they're not on this list? Or if it's, like, I feel like 30 days is really, when you're dealing with circumstances, I feel like maybe we could tweak that language a little bit and I don't know if that's amicable to you guys or, or how you feel about that.
You guys kind of write the rules and I help enforce them. So I'll toss that back.
Thank you so much. That really helps.
I'm not opposed to that, counselor. I think we could definitely break that down or make a, some sort of a guide in there that just says, here it is, here's your, your, your snow- your snowbird policy. Here's your, your Realtor, real estate issues, and maybe that extends out to a 60 or 90 day potential, just for that listing, turnaround, closing costs, all that type of stuff. I think that's, that's a growing pain that we're going to have to tweak this as we grow.
Right.
And if we catch it early, I, I think that's great, and make that amendment. And I'm sure we'll be having some more discussions as this progresses and evolves, so.
Well, I, I appreciate you being open to that, because I think there was a lot of confusion with, with, you know, how that's, how they're going to kind of navigate the, the agents, how they're going to navigate.
I just want to be cautious that this is a, this is a good specific case I think we can get ahead of right at the front of this. But as we, we execute the rest of our ordinances, I think we've got to be slow to react to some of those because we're going to get a lot of feedback from the public. And I think if we try to jump on it on the front side, we're going to burn ourselves on the backside. So I think we need to either have a, a comment list and keep that kind of stashed away. And as we get through that first review of a first year, as we roll it out, especially on the business side, then I think we need to step back and evaluate and make those sound decisions of.
That's a great suggestion.
Conversation with our attorney, just, hey, we got to have a work group as we're rolling this out because we're already running across different questions. And it's like, okay, at what point is that ability for enforcement, or how we, how we want to do that as a team and represent that city, and, and also the well-being of the community or those building owners, so.
We wanted just one clarification, too, that with any snowbird that's called, we've talked to them about, that have called and inquired. The, the ordinance does state there is an exception for snowbirds, but we do encourage them to still give us your information. There's no fee, but at least give us the contact information so that if something were to happen, and not necessarily at your house, what if your neighbor's house burnt down, and you may have smoke damage, and we don't know who to contact? I mean, those are the kind of things that we would need to know a person's information. And so we've been, any of those people that have called, we've said, there's no fee for snowbirds, but please just register so that we know who to contact. We don't give the list out. It's basically for our purposes, for us to know who's, where and when, how to get ahold of them.
That's good checks and balance for our law enforcement, because they also get calls to say, hey, can you do a, a building check on this? So if there's something that we have, we, we have that ability. So the more we communicate, and, and they're communicating back to us, we're, we're doing that.
I agree. I think that's an important safety function, for sure. And if I may just go on one more, and this is regarding, I would say, the fire code, or the, yeah, so, and I think a couple other counselors have had maybe feedback on this. Is it, is it, are you going, when you do go, or if you, I know you're working from a, maybe an area which is mapped out, is it a random, like, are you going to just show up announced, unannounced, I mean, or is it kind of make an appointment and, and?
We sent out those notifications if, if I'll go. So like, right now, we rolled this out, you know, really that first full week of January is when I started getting a lot of things. We had some hiccups on the computer side of things. So now we're getting engaged. So to date, I've got six completed. We have some others that are just, we're been playing tag, or we have to contact those owners to make that inspection. So they've been notified, they have that date, they know that we're, we're coming in, we have that purview.
So there's a notification process?
If there's something that they want to schedule that, they can sure give us a call at any time. I've done, we had one business that was outside of the district that we're currently in and said, hey, can you come in? Yep, we'll, we'll make that happen.
So they're, just so I'm clear, there is a notification process. And, and then if the building owner or business owner or whatever, if they're not available, and say there's some rental property there, but they want to be there on site, is there leeway for that?
We prefer that somebody.
I've been getting feedback, I think, of other.
So to clarify that, we try to make sure that there's a manager or, and/or the building owner there and present. So I don't do any of those inspections if somebody's there to escort me. When it comes to the rental, that's a whole nother ballgame, and that's what we're working on for our next phase. So we leave that alone unless there's something directly life threatening affecting that operation of that residential space. Otherwise, we're just doing the business side of it.
Okay. And, and I think that might be part of what, you know, you might be feeling or hearing pushback on that. But I think that if, if people understand there is a notification process, it's not kind of a random, not kind of door.
We're just pulling up and doing a random, a random inspection. So, yep, they've been notified by mail. They have that time. They've been told between this date and this date. Be expecting the fire marshal and don't be.
And then it's just a random show up?
And if they're unavailable, I'll reschedule that appointment, and if they're able to let me in, then.
In, in many other organizations. I, I know what you're, you're thinking of. On this date and this time, your business is slated for a scheduled inspection. We simply don't have enough staff to do that, because what would happen is if we slate them into those spots, a lot of times, Chris gets ended up pulled out on a medical call or pulled out on a fire call. So we would actually have to have more staff in place. In a perfect world, that's, that's exactly how you would do it. You would slate out, your business is inspected at 9:15 on Monday. It will be a one hour inspection. Please assure that the responsible party is there. It would meet our staff member. But that, we really have to have dedicated staff to do that. I'm from Duluth, and Chris is out. Fire investigation.
And I think the, and I don't mean to go on, but I think the concern that I've heard is more so the property owner would like to be present, and I think there's a concern that, that might not occur. So I don't know if in that ordinance, it addresses that.
What they should do is call and schedule then, when they know they're going to be there. Because Chris is, will do appointments. So if the business owner knows that he's going to be up next Thursday for some reason, call and schedule Chris for that day and time when you're there. And then we can make sure that that business owner is there. But Chris, like he mentioned, does try to, he doesn't talk to the employees. He doesn't, he wants to do it when there's somebody there that's.
Right. And I think that that's what I'm getting at, because I think that's maybe that pushback that you guys are, or that feedback you're getting, is people are, are not real clear on the process.
Again, I think this is one of those shaky starts out of the chute, and we're going, we're going to have a lot of that. So I guess the, the best thing is, if they have some questions, refer them to the website. That's probably the best. Get the solid information off of that. And if they have other questions, just direct them to me, and I'll be more than happy to field their call, and we can schedule that.
Thank you.
I think, Chris, the biggest question I get is, do I have to have a sprinkler system?
So I'll, I'll reiterate that. That's going to be really on how that building is occupied and how it's, it's dedicated. And no, if it doesn't have one now, it probably doesn't unless they're making, like that. So, and that's why we have these grants, and we're, we're sharing this information with them. Pursue that if it looks like something that...
I think it's a great thing to point out, Chris, Chris and Bill, when they're doing these inspections, they're handing out our information sheet about grant programs that are available. So if you're in downtown, you get the downtown district one. If you're out of town, you get the VITA, one that says we have $15,000 loans and then $5,000 grants, so.
Thank you. Before we move to the next two counselors, just to clarify, I've hand-delivered a couple dozen of the, the fire code ordinance with the checklist to a bunch of businesses. And looking at the fire code ordinance, explaining to them what it is, they just hear it. It's rumor. It's, it's passed on, not rumor, but it's passed on from business owner to business owner. They're all fired up about, you know, what, and, and not, not understanding what needs to be done. Once they take a look at the inspection list, you explain to them that this is what they're going to be looking at when they come to inspect your business. They're not going to give you a fine. They're going to help investigate and determine what improvements you can make, the recommendations they make. And if there are any code violations that need immediate attention, the fire marshal is going to work with you on that and, and help you determine, you know, how you can accomplish repair to that. In addition to that, your, your, your insurance is going to be affected by that as well. You get a reduction in insurance based upon the inspection, that you get a clean bill of health, and those kind of things. And people are more understanding of that. That's why I think it's imperative moving forward. And answering to Counsel Paulson's concerns, is that you'll be able to alleviate that when, when you visit all these, because it's easy for us to see it here. We looked at the orders, we reviewed it, we discussed it. We look at it in, in every way, shape or form, and we approved it. But when you apply it, these kind of issues come forward that are unanticipated. So you're going to take the brunt of that. The counselors are to take it, our city administrator, myself. But as you roll out this program, as you say, there's growing pains. You know, I think the goal and objective is to make sure that if you have a vacant building, that we know who the owner is. I think that's the most important thing of all. As far as, you know, repairs and those kind of things, that comes down the road. You do the same thing, but it's imperative that we know who that building owner is. That's the purpose of a vacant building registration. So if you have to make adjustments based on the realty companies or, or the homes that are being for sale, we can make an adjustment in that timeframe. But the bottom line is, registration isn't key. You know, registration, maybe you don't pay a fee for 30, 60, 90 days or whatever, but you have, I think the registration is important to determine the ownership. Because once it's registered, you, the people know that. If they sell it, or if they move something else, or it becomes, they, they can notify because it has to be registered. And there's no, there's no, there's no ramifications for that. It's just a notification process in the event an incident occurred as our city administrator employed. So I think that's, moving forward, these growing pains are going to happen. And I think Counsel Paulson, thank you for bringing up those up. I think those are important issues to consider as we move forward. Let's move over to Counsel Biondich, and then to Counsel Johnson. Counsel Biondich.
And yes, I have had visitors and phone calls over, over both the business and the rental side of this, which, as I've said before, I had my building inspected, and it was painless. One of them was very concerned about being at their establishment when it was inspected. They did not want an employee going through. They felt that they needed to be there. And I think they are in this first phase of inspections coming up. I also spoke with a woman who has rental property in town, and she's also very nervous about the fees. Occupied for a few months, and it's not rented, what then? So yes, a lot of, a lot of questions are coming forward after the fact that this has gone through. And I think it's, it's good to have that open policy where we can speak, you know, as, as issues come forward, where we can address them and put everybody at ease for what is happening.
Say probably one of the biggest things to, to tack on to that is, I get a lot of resistance so far, even just the six that I've done. And then, of course, just the comments. Is that fee base that we're charging, oh, there's a fee for this? Well, we're inspecting these buildings, trying to help them establish a safe environment for the services that they're offering to the public. So we're trying to keep the public safe and as well as longevity of a building. The registry portion, as Mayor Cuffey referred to, not just the vacant, but the business. Dark 30 on New Year's Eve, and, and nobody's around, we got to know how to get ahold of somebody. And that's important, and that goes to the rentals, that goes to the businesses, that goes to vacant buildings, because those are the ones that are, we need somebody now to help us make a decision, do the best we can to mitigate that. But it's after the fact to take care of that longevity of that property. So yes, I, I know that that's a concern. Again, refer them back to our webpage. If they have some comments, I would encourage them to get them to you. I think we should keep those comments and reference back to them as we look at, at moving things forward. And again, they can make that appointment with me or express that concern to be attending the, the inspection.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Johnson?
Mayor, I think the thing I keep hearing over and over again is people heard. I heard this, I heard that. And that communication is key, you know. Back when I ran the childcare center, you came over and long, I think it was probably eight, nine years ago now, came over, and I think we needed to invest $89 in a metal cabinet for paint. And, and then we worked with you and the police and the fire department to stage an evacuation of, if we ever needed to do that. And those things I did for the safety of my children and my families and my staff. And, and I think that's, you know, the mindset is what you're referring to, is people are seeing this as another way of the city getting control and making them pay. And, and I look at it as, I, I said this at Breakfast Connections last week, this is one of those first steps in fighting the blight in the city. We are looking to make our city better. People are continually saying, when I was 12, we could walk down the street, and we could do this, and we could do this. What is, what are you doing? This is what we're doing. We're, we're trying to get ahold of those buildings so that we can be aware of them. We're trying to make the city safer. We're trying to be aware of where potential challenges could be. And so, so we, we seem to have this fix the city, but don't include me in fixing it. And if we're going to fix the city of Virginia, it needs to be a team effort. It needs to be the city, the city counselors, our residents, our visitors. Everybody needs to work together. And I think these are the first steps that we are trying to do to move forward. And it's, it's not etched in stone. It's not, we, we are willing to listen. We are willing to move forward, but we have to start somewhere. And this is our somewhere. We're starting with these ordinances. We're discussing them. We're having you come here where the, the city administration is willing to, to listen. And I, I just appreciate your work and, and would ask residents to think about it from a different perspective, that this is how we're moving forward. We're, we're starting here, and if they have suggestions, let us know. Go to the website. It's an election year. Run for city council. There, there are ways people can influence what happens here. And, and we're starting somewhere, and I appreciate the work that the staff have done as we continue to move forward on this.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Counsel Freely?
I don't want to belabor this conversation. And I do fully recognize and acknowledge, and I totally support the work that you do. And I, I, I know there's legitimization and necessity with regard to these codes and these ordinances. I too have heard from people. There's been negative backlash with regard to the implementation of these. I've talked about, originally when we talked about this, Chris, can you handle the volume of work that this is going to put upon you? And, and, and now it appears is that if we move forward with the rental code, there's a potentiality of another personnel having to be hired for bureaucratic oversight of these kinds of initiatives. So that concerns me to some degree. And I know where you're speaking of, Steve, but on the other hand, and speaking from a devil's advocacy, so to speak. I mean, when you think in terms of like, you know, the necessity for law enforcement and ordinances to be put in place on behalf of public safety, I, I fully understand that and support that. But on the other hand, you know, you have to think in terms of like, oftentimes, and you talked about the minimization of the issues that are occurring within the city, which is in part because of the education that you're putting forth on these issues. But oftentimes, because of a minority of things that occur, then the majority is encompassed in the ordinance to oversee the minority of issues that occurred, if that makes sense. And I guess the reality is, there are a lot of people that take public safety and personal individual safety very seriously within their own home by putting up smoke detectors, radar detectors, and so on and so forth, and take that seriously. And I think that there's kind of a misconception in this city also that any and all people that have invested in multiple properties are slum lords per se, when in reality, we had, I thought, a half a dozen people come forth that were speaking on behalf of those that owned multiple places and spoke almost misty-eyed about having to raise rents on people that they know couldn't afford that because of the added costs that they were going to be incurring because of the taxes in town, not necessarily the fees that they were incurring. But I have heard some negative viewpoints on that as well. Like, it's fine and well for you to know that I own this vacant property, but do I have to pay you 50 bucks to do that? Or it's all well and fine for me to own these units for rental, but do I have to pay you 150 bucks per unit eventually to, to own those and have it on a registry of some sort? So my concern a little bit is, you know, we've got to be cautious with so many people in this town that are kind of between a rock and a hard place in terms of like what they can afford in the improvements on their properties, and, and having too much almost governmental oversight, expecting people to do things that maybe will, I mean, 50 bucks doesn't sound like a lot to, but when you add that up to people who own, you know, 20 buildings or 40 buildings or whatever, it gets to be a significant amount for them. So that's the only thing I'm saying. I, I do think the key factor to the success of this within this city, and I, again, I legitimize it, and I know it's a necessity, is the communications piece to it, and the education piece to it, and minimizing at all costs, any enforcement and citation piece to that. And so if that's the, the route that we're going, and I see that we are, because I know the professionalism that you guys employ within the city, and I appreciate that and respect that very much. And I know that we will be successful in communicating this appropriately, but I don't think it's not beyond us to maybe... not beyond us to maybe think again about these fees and how often they should be having to pay those fees, or whether or not the fees are actually necessary. And if the, and one person did say the other day, hey, where's my fifty bucks going then? You know, what are you going to be using that for? If it's to hire another person to oversee the bureaucracy of this, I don't like that. And that's a legitimate concern on behalf of people who are providing space for people to live in in town. And then added to that in regard to like, we need to know who the people are with these vacant buildings. On the county registry, most of those buildings are registered with, and again, there's a minority of them that aren't. So why were we not, why would we not pursue the minority instead of encompassing the majority of that? That's all I'm saying. So there are concerns in this city with regard to the implementation of this. Obviously, I'm not non-supportive of it. Like I said, the key factor to the success of this is the communications and education within the community to help people understand what we're doing and why we're doing it, and hopefully not overstepping ourselves with regard to our enforcement capacity and capabilities, if that makes any sense. So with that, that's enough said.
Thank you. Britt?
I just want to point out on the county website, while it is very, very great, they only know what they know. They don't have any contract for deeds. They don't know if somebody died. They don't know if the taxpaying address that is on there is current or not until it's been six years and nobody's paid the taxes. So those, while it's a great website, does not have all that information. And already, an address, not a phone number, not a person's name if it's a corporation. We don't know who we're contacting. If it's American Bank in Texas, good luck, you know, we won't be able to find there, which happens quite a bit. And what has happened since this vacant registry has gone, and we've had at least three people come in that their parent has died, and they did not get the house in probate. So they have no idea who's going to take care of it, what's going to happen to it. But the county has them listed on there.
And if I could add, like, just one-
Yeah, please do.
Is the definition of a vacancy also. Like, there are buildings that are vacant, but are being utilized by the individual owner for whatever purposes, but not necessarily those that we think it should be, I guess. And that was a concern as well.
And that's not vacant. I've had that conversation too.
Okay.
That people that own just garages on lots, that looks, you know, you drive by and it's just a garage in a vacant lot. If the garage is being used for storage, that's not vacant. That's being used for storage. It's got a purpose. But then I give them that same speech like the Snowbirds, but it's still good for us to know, if you're not the adjacent property owner, who owns that garage at that lot? So if the garage burns down, who are we calling? Because I can tell you, these guys are not at three o'clock in the morning looking on Land Explorer, trying to figure out who these people are, what's going on.
My concern is, and I don't think we're going to go there, and I think you guys are capable of informing the public adequately to understand this. But, you know, I don't want to see buildings closed down or people moving out or vacating more buildings because of the oversight that we're putting on the backs of these people that own these buildings. So-
And I really encourage them to call us, because we really have been working with these and fielding these calls. Between Chris and I and Chris and the fire department, we've been fielding these calls and answering these questions, because they are legitimate. Like I said, the garage one, I own this garage. I am using it for storage. I have my classic cars in there. Just let us know who owns it. That's all we really want to know. So if something happens, we know who to call.
And I, we can and we will be successful with these initiatives with you two guys in place. I appreciate that.
One last comment for-
Yeah, thank you, Council Freely. Go ahead, Chris.
I think we knew there was going to be some negative repercussions on that. And at what point do we put the brakes on and say, we're not going to solve all these safety issues and all that until we do something. And unfortunately, our empowerment is through that code enforcement, those types of things, and to keep people maintaining their properties, because we've had neglect, I'm not going out, and maybe neglect's not the right word, but we've had some downfalls in enforcing proper building maintenance. And we've also got to have some onus on the property owners that say, hey, we've allowed, why are these buildings dilapidated or run down or whatever? There's going to be some catch-up on that. We're trying to ease that pain through obtaining grants, giving some different things, and trying to make a phase-in process of what's our priorities to make these buildings habitable. And unfortunately, that might be displacing tenants in a rental thing when that comes down the road, because the building isn't compliant or being used in its entirety, even though how they bought it, how it was used, nobody's been out policing that. So there's some, there's some buildings there. There's downtown buildings that are being used for storage. It's still a building front. We still need to know who does that. Back to what Britt said, it doesn't tell me who that tenant is that's renting that space of that building. And we don't know who to contact for that specific, even though that landlord may be renting that space. He may not have that key control. He may not have any of those things. So that comes with, okay, we need a Knox box. We need these control accesses. And yeah, it's not cheap. And I think we all realize that as we move forward adopting this. There was going to be some of that negative repercussion, but the longevity to this in the long term, we'll get past it, and it's going to have some uncomfortableness to it as we move forward. But I think we can endure that. And we have to just work on taking these negative comments and how can we make them a lot more easier and acceptable.
Okay. The policy we always employ, we should employ based on everything everybody said, is you draft an ordinance, you communicate, you inform, you counsel, you train, you advise, and at the last resort, you enforce. That's the policy. That's what we ask you to do. I think that's what you're trying to do. I think that's what Council Freely and all of us are alluding to. And it's the communication piece moving forward. It is, whenever a new ordinance comes into place, it's communication, where you have five public hearings or where we discuss at a council, the draft ordinance, we look at it, we ask questions, then we approve it, and now there's a residual effect, and now we're back discussing it again, because it's important, because the community asks us those questions. So by employing those tactics, which you've done, and have done on the police department level, before you tow a car, you advise. If you don't, you know, then you write them a ticket, then you tow. I mean, so it's all about a step process before you get there. So I think we're moving forward. We can make adjustments to whatever we need to do moving on down the road. But right now, thank you for the information you provided. Does any council have anything else that they'd like to add before we move on to the next topic? Council Bernzelli?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Loiser. Chris, those last few structure fires, the one in Navarre, the one on Third Street North and the 100 block, do you ever find where those people are using these little electric heaters plugged into a knob and tube wire system?
That's back to education, yes. That's a lot of, I can't say or comment on those two incidents. I can tell you that it wasn't attributed to the electrical, but we see that a lot. And there's a risk, and that's back to education.
Yeah.
Back to seeing that, looking at the electrical. As we said, we know that that's some of our top five issues within our buildings here. It's roofs, water, plumbing, electrical, you know, to name some. That's what we're enforcing. And some of it's been done in the past, some of it just hasn't been updated, partial updates. That's where we kind of come in and try to work with that.
I think you guys are great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bernzelli. Okay, any other questions or comments or concerns before we move on to the next topic? Thank you, Chris. Thank you, chief.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. I just want to say that the final, it is about education. Enforcement is the last step. No one is going to get surprised. There will be a very step process in this whole thing. But it's part of our community risk reduction program, you know, the education, the engineering controls, the economic incentives, that's part of it. Enforcement is only the last step. Thank you for your time and attention. We plan to continue these indicative, you know, sessions, so not just to you folks, but to the-
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Chris. Okay, thank you. Patiently Waiting is-
Thank you, Ryan.
Park and Rec Director. I applaud you for your patience in this regard. Britt?
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Minor's Event and Convention Center. First one is review Live Barn venue agreement for broadcasting services.
For those of you who do not know what Live Barn is, Live Barn is a video streaming service. They are a company that are, that goes around to different arenas and places cameras in the arenas. And then you are, as a private individual, are able to buy into their subscription service to watch what's going on in the arena. We, being the arena owner, would have the ability to black out their feeds, which we would do for such things as high school hockey games, or if the hockey coaches wanted to have a practice that was not being livestreamed. Another nice thing about this is that if you have a subscription to this service, you can go back and watch a game that was played yesterday. Some coaches enjoy doing this, because not all practices or games are videotaped. This way, they can get a different perspective of what's going on. Primarily, Live Barn is designed, though, for those who do not live in the town, like grandma or grandpa, that are wanting to see their grandchildren play in a hockey game, or practice, or for figure skating, watching a figure skating practice, or like yesterday's testing session, you could have watched that. So we've been in discussion with them for a little while now. And in your packet, you will see the latest contract that they have sent us. What is in red are the changes that they have made per our request.
Okay. Brian, if I may, I don't know if our city attorneys has an opportunity to review this contract. I would think, if you have you?
I've looked at it briefly.
Okay, briefly. So looking at the contract, looking at a recommendation from the staff. But my question, quickly, if I may, Council Paulson, my question is, how does this meld with our current feeds with, you know, with our local access television? Is it separate? Do they, can they use those cameras? And how does it affect with the contract that maybe are the announcements might have with My Nine to provide videotape services? Does that have an effect on that as well?
Has no effect on our, what we are currently doing. It would just be added to what we are currently doing. And our intention would be to block out any time our local cable or My Nine is showing something, we would be blocking that out.
And I can tell you that my buddy who works in Australia for a security consultant firm can watch his grandson play hockey in Edina on the livestream. It's amazing. So thank you.
So that's basically what this is. Now, the quality of the video is not like what our cable commission or what My Nine does. It is an unmanned camera that is motion sensing. So it is chasing the motion up and down the ice. It's not always accurate. So there may be a fast break, and the fast break's over here and the camera's over here. It's just, it's still working with the technology. And there is really no cost to us. It would just be a potential revenue stream for us, because we would get a cut of the subscriptions for.
That would be a question I would have had. Does it cost for us? Do we gain revenue from it? And the quality appears to be not the standard we'd like to see, but from a factual perspective and a revenue stream, it could help us. And as they move the technology forward to improve, that may improve the ability for them to provide that service. So those who subscribe to the service, you know.
It's mostly a service that we would be able to provide for our parents and grandparents that are not able to be at the arena for games or practices.
Okay, thank you. And I think there's an issue on, I guess that's separate from my, for, Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I want to say we've had discussions on this before, but I am 100% opposed to this in any way, shape, or form. If you look at item 1.6, Live Barn shall be the exclusive owner of all rights in and to the content, and shall have the exclusive right to broadcast the content for all purposes and in any manner it determines in its sole discretion, including providing its broadcast signal to a national broadcasters and digital media distributors. So that means they could take, what they have, Live Barn has a YouTube channel, that they actually take footage, they actually, whatever, whoever's subscribing, or not subscribing, whatever community or wherever that camera is installed, and they can use that footage for bloopers or whatever. And as a, first of all, as a parent, I get to choose when my children are filmed, how I want that put out on social media, if I do or if I don't. Number two, it says, in 5.1, the venue owner agrees to post a notice at the entrance to its venue and inside each sheet, ice sheet, advertising to the public that the venue is monitored by video cameras for security, safety, and commercial purposes, and its participants waive any claim relating to the capture or public transmission of his or her participation while at the venue. I feel like, again, it's opting, you don't have an opt-in. I just do not agree with this policy. If we are going to install cameras, I feel like it should be, we should have, excuse me, consulting by Pantheon. I feel like privacy is extremely important, although it's a, you trade privacy for convenience regarding being able to watch your children or to watch a sports event. But in my opinion, this is no different. This type of solicitation is no different than the company that came through to give us free videos on our city website and hit each business for thirty-five hundred dollars to advertise a banner. So to me, this is, this is soliciting our city to generate 30% of a subscription at the trade-off of every community member that enters into that facility, their privacy. And I just, I feel that that is not acceptable. And if we do go forward in terms of a type of live streaming, that the city would own the content, and that Pantheon would be either the distributor or, I have issues putting out my insurance information on forums. Like, I just am a very data privacy person, period. And I feel like by making this decision, we are not allowing the public to have an opt-out. They have no option to opt-out. The minute they enter that building, that right is waived because of the signage. So that's where I'm coming from. And if, I mean, I'd like discussion to continue, but if I could make a motion, I would move to decline this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Paulson. I, there's some grave concerns. I think we should, local control is important. I think that requires further discussion. But I would like to defer to our city attorney to address this issue, because I have the same concerns that you do.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council Paulson. This, actually, this raises kind of another interesting question. And that question is, if the city's entering into a contract that results in the production of some sort of media or content, what we're essentially creating is data under the Minnesota Data Practices Act. And we may run into some issues or have some concerns data-practice-wise with this section 1.6 of the contract. Essentially, once data is created for the city, the city has certain obligations. And if we're told that another company is going to have exclusive access or exclusive control of that content, it may run afoul of some obligations that we may have, should somebody come and make a legitimate data-practice request. And so this is an issue, if the council is looking to move forward. I'd never like to delay these things, but this is an issue that I'd like to take a little bit of a closer look at.
And there is no issue with delaying this at this point. We would not be doing install until sometime this summer. So it would not be up and running until next hockey season.
And I'll support that.
Yeah, it's, you're eliminated at this point. And thank you, Brian. I think that's the appropriate way to go. Is somebody else? I can't, I can't see. Well, first, Council Freely, then Council Bearwood. Thank you.
Did they approach you, or did you seek them?
Baha approached me about doing this.
And I know there are, like, last night, the girls' basketball game from Little Fork Big Falls versus Mountain Iron was streamed on the NFHS network. So, and then we utilize Huddle, H-U-D-L, for like, review of our game films and so on. So I think there are other vendors that are available that might not have that kind of exclusivity to the rights of the content or whatever. So I would, you know, advise you and encourage you to explore some other options or entities that may provide these kinds of services, but are maybe more geared towards data privacy as opposed, like, for example, you wouldn't want your child to muff a play and then see it on the top ten, you know, muffed plays of Live Barn on some channel somewhere. And it's like, hey, that's my kid. That's not cool, you know, that kind of thing. So I would suggest that we also have legal counsel look at it and determine whether or not it's appropriate for our upcoming-
Thank you. I don't like it, but, Council Bearwood.
Yeah, Julianne made a motion, but I don't think we had a second.
She did not make a motion yet.
Oh, she didn't, okay.
She did. She said, if I was to make a motion, she has not quite done so yet, but she's welcome to do so.
I'm going to make a- I'm going to make a motion and on this to move this forward, so we can get this meeting moving a little bit longer or faster. moving a little bit longer, or faster, I should say. I'm gonna move that our city attorney review and look at this and come back with a recommendation at our next meeting of the committee of the whole.
Support. Support by Councilor Freely, further discussion. Councilor Johnson?
I guess, I'm confused, Brian, because you're saying that we can black out anything we don't want people to see.
Correct.
But grandparents can watch their kids play. How does that work?
What we would blackout would be like the high school games when we have our local television crews that are there. Or if, like, the high school coach, they were preparing for a game and they didn't want, they were having a closed practice. At those times, we are able to turn off the cameras.
And my, I guess the other question would be a personnel issue. Does this mean when our staff are doing maintenance, they're going to be filmed?
They would be, yes.
I guess that would be something I'd want to look at, too, is if there's any, again, privacy personnel issues with, with our, with our employees. And is, what's the length of the contract? I didn't look close enough. Pardon? Six years?
Yes.
I'd like that looked at, too. Thank you.
I didn't mean to laugh. Yes, I did, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, I have.
It's been moved and supported, and I'll just say, I, I totally opposed to this at this point in time. Do we find some other method? Councilor Bearbu?
Yeah, I have just one, one more comment. There are other venues. I have a grandson playing basketball at Central Lakes Community College. It's all live-streamed on YouTube. So, I mean, I can watch it anytime I want, and I can go back and watch it. Because YouTube has it, so there's a lot of, and it's great for me as a grandparent to watch this, but I have a big problem with this, like the mayor does and Julianne on this project, so we need a legal opinion on this.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Bearbu.
Plus, plus, we have a press box that we're putting in this new facility, and it's not just going to be a venue for one individual. Look at what's going on. There'll be multiples up in that press box, correct, Brian?
Yes, the press box will be able to accommodate multiple.
Okay, so there's other venues we can use.
Yeah, thank you. Councilor Paulson?
I, I will vote in favor of, of Councilor Bearbu's motion, but on the record, I'm not in favor of doing any type of live streaming that is, I would call that like express consent, you know, where, where the public is just entering into a facility, and by just entering, they've given that write-up. I, I feel like that is an intrusion of privacy. So moving forward, I mean, even as we livestream our own meetings, I mean, that should be on a consent form for all the athletic, all the athletics that would be taking place in there, that they would, you know, adhere to that or accept that. So if a parent says, no, I don't, that's not acceptable to me, then what do we do? So I feel like you're, we're trumping rights of, of, you select, and maybe there's a minority that really don't, they have no desire to have their child filmed or anything like that. And so I think that there, I'm agreeing that we need legal counsel on this, but I think moving forward, I, I'm just, I'm not in favor of, of any sort of thing like that unless it's just like a, like a livestream YouTube that we, like we do here. Maybe that would be acceptable as parents consent to that. So I just wanted to go on record saying that I don't, I'm not in favor. But I will vote in favor of our attorney reviewing.
And, and the quick question is, is there's this difference between doing this and having security cameras mounted all over the minors, when we're opening projects, because we control the cameras, we control the access, we control the access to it, so it's completely different. Yeah, thank you. But it's moved and supported, what was the motion again? Pam?
Allow the city attorney to review and bring to the next committee of the whole meeting.
Very good, thank you. Moved by Councilor Paulson, moved by Councilor Bearbu, supported by Councilor Freely. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is actually an addendum to the lease with Vaha. This is from our bond counsel. We cleaned up the language a little bit, that Vaha needs to disclose that they are 501(c)(3) in their lease agreement with the city, which they are.
All support.
Moved by Councilor Freely, but supported by Councilor Bearbu. This issue is the quickest one we've had today. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
And the next item, again, is back to Brian for the design development, number two.
Yep. On your desk, I placed a copy of our design development report, number two, for this year, showing you where we have, what we have accomplished here since the last committee of the whole meeting. Also, over the weekend, I sent you a nice email with lots and lots of attachments of documents that we did not have prepared for our meeting last week. So again, if you would like to review paper copies of those, because none of our printers will print out blueprints quite the size that they need to be printed, if you prefer paper copies, I will have copies of those blueprints available for anyone to review at any time, not only council members, but any members of the public are welcome to visit me to look at the current design development phases that we are in. I would encourage that.
And my question to you, Brian, would be, in the design development phase, as we look forward to this, and I did have a brief conversation with the city administrator about that, I think all the councils are wondering, when would be the appropriate time to be able to put the, at least the concept design with the, with the, with the codicil that, you know, that this could change, but here's the basic design moving forward in the, in the, in the publication, the newspaper. I know we've done it at the public areas, you have the design. So do we anticipate what, when something like that could be put in the paper, just to put, you know, the mech design, the general design here, not what's, everything that's going in there, but just to date the general design? And I know that Britt is, is taking a look at what, trying to define when the appropriate timeframe which to do that. I know we've been in a lot of calls about that. I would look for your thoughts and comments about where we're at.
Um, as we come to the end of design development, we should not be having any more major changes. Like, from when we revealed the schematic design to this point, we've had some changes in the footprint of the building, such as we've gotten our bathroom counts right, so we have more bathrooms in the facility, which caused the offices to move upstairs from the schematic design. So I would say probably at this point, we are, would be safe in releasing the general information of this is what the facility is going to look like and feel like when you come into it.
And then by, by advertising it or putting in the paper, the page where it shows the schematics and saying, you know, additional work is being done, the minutia of the mechanical electric, blah, 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 is all being done, but here's the basic design. I think what the public is looking for, the design, for the most part, what it looks like, exterior, and, you know, generally what's interior, and then the footprint it's going to be located on. I think that's, would be satisfactory, if that's possible.
We have not determined the road yet, so putting it out there quite yet, that there'll be a road that goes through, might be a little precautionary at this moment.
Okay, well, thank you. So could we put potentially just the design in there, just the schematic?
I can get prices for that. It's going to be very, very expensive. It's going to be at least a quarter page, but yeah.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
We'll do that.
I'll reserve for any other comments or questions by the council. Yeah, I know it's, it would be expensive, but I was finding a way to do that, so, okay.
Everything's on our website. We do have a project page for the minors, and we do keep pretty up to date.
Okay, thank you, and I'll, I'll refer the questions to the website. Thank you. Anybody else? Councilor Johnson?
Yes, one of the things that I feel lost about in this process is that when we have asked questions or made suggestions, I've not seen a direct answer. For example, the park, the, the parking on the west side of the building as opposed to the east side and the road that goes through. And I know that that has been part of this since we hired DSDW and everybody else, that that is, that is like at the top of our list of things we want to see happen. And it continues to come forward as an add-on so we can change it. And, and I'm frustrated with the process because some of the things that we have been very, we got an email that the, and I want to get the wording right, access, the key access, card readers has been something that has been since the beginning of the, before you got here, the stuff that we've seen. And email this morning, those things are still being left out. And, and it concerns me that we, as the owner of the building, and, and quite honestly, Britt and the administrator, saying these are the things our must-haves, keep getting put on not as must-haves. And they should have been there at the very beginning, like, we should have planned for key access at the beginning of this process because that was one of the requests that was made way at the beginning. The west road, the west entrance to alleviate traffic and for ease of entrance was something that was started when we first started this process, when I first got on the council, three years ago now. And somehow, they keep getting pushed back as add-ons, and that's been frustrating to me, and I brought it up when we've met with them, and we get, okay, we'll note it. But what I'd like to see from them is, here's the concerns that we are consistently bringing up, and this is how it's being addressed as contingent upon what we want. At the last meeting, we were talking about the overhangs outside and whether they need to be sprinkled, and they'd have to be dry sprinkled because if they're wet sprinkled, they'd freeze, blah, blah. And then the comment was made, well, we could do all steel, but we really want the wood around them, and so we would have to get flame-retarded wood. Well, that we, to me, my understanding is what the architects want, the designers want. That is not what we want as a city. And I think we really need to be clear when it comes to the keys, and, and I don't know what that whole list is. I'm sure, Britt, you have a relatively good idea what are, kind of are non-negotiables. You know, some of the plans show literally hundreds of trees around the perimeter, and a west, we're going to re, for, for, right now, the plan, as I remember it, unless it's changed, was that we're not going to do anything on the west, the parking's all going to be on the east, and you have to walk around the front of the building to get in. And to me, that's, that is, that was never the intent. The intent is to make that building accessible, which means parking, some parking on the west, with entrance on the west, with the road on the west. So people coming in from 169 or 53 literally have to make one or two turns, and not six or seven to get into the building, and we take the traffic away from the residential part. And I, I sit here frustrated because then I get told, well, come have coffee with me, and we'll discuss it. No, I don't want to discuss it over coffee. I want you to change it because that's what we're asking for as a city. And, and I know, Brian, you are working hard, and, and this is not, not you. It's, it's, you know, the people working for us, and, and that's how I feel about this with my frustration, is that I would like to see the things that we've put in as non-negotiables that we really want and how they've been addressed, like specifically. That's what I would like to see as a counselor and a representative of the city.
Uh, in the email that I sent out Saturday afternoon, there was a site plan in there. You will see that we have added parking back into both on the east side and the west side of the building. So that addressed one of the issues that you brought up.
And quite honestly, it was a busy weekend, and I.
Yes.
And there were, you, there were lots of pages, Brian, so I appreciate you pointing that.
Yes, there were lots of pages.
And that's why we're doing this, so you can point those things out, because you're over your head in design and everything, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Councilor Bearbu?
Yeah, if we go back to where we just approved this amendment to Vaha on this, this will hopefully increase the dollar bills on this project because they can be put under a tax-exempt bond, and I'll correct from what I read, and this will save us dollars. And before, it wasn't a tax-exempt bond, and this gives us the priority to, to do this. I agree, Steve, with 100%. They need to keep that road in there. It's only going to get twice as expensive to put that in after the fact. And for traffic control and flow, I'm dead set against the architects taking that road out of there. It's got to be done with a roundabout and a hole shot for traffic flow into that arena, and then you got double entrance and double way in. So if need be, we'll put it in there, and we'll do something and get it in there somehow. But it, we need to tell them that that's a priority from our perspective. So I appreciate your thoughts on that. Thank you.
Okay, so this design development, too, this is a, you're not asking for an approval here or a motion, are you? Just, just a report?
Just providing you information.
Providing you information, and we're, we're giving you some feedback, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda, this has been a long, long issue with the Griner Troy site. And we had agreed about two years ago to sell that site to NTS to build the parking lot. This is the final approval we need from MPC, that they have agreed the parking lot is just fine there. It's actually the preferred use of the land. There was some contamination, which we all knew from the dry cleaners, the solvents that were in there. They have determined the solvents have not traveled, they have stayed right there in sight, so the best thing for the site is to encapsulate it, put concrete, put asphalt right on top of it. So once we sign this document, we can finally convey the lot to NTS, and they can finally move on with what they're going to do.
Also move the resolution.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Moved by Councilor Bearbu, is there support? Support by Councilor Freely, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Mr. and Mrs. Griner be very happy. Thank you.
Thank you to NTS for being so patient, working with us on that one.
Yes.
Um, the next item on the agenda is resolution authorizing hire of a patrol officer. We have now two openings in the PD, so this is for one of those positions.
Did we have a, a recent resignation, or is that?
We just got a resignation on Friday from another employee. That's going to the county.
Yes, yeah. Okay, Councilor Paulson?
I'll move to approve the hire.
Councilor Paulson moves to approve the hire of the new patrol officer, is there support?
Or?
Support by Councilor Johnson, is there any further discussion?
I just want to point out, they, after the, we approve this today, then we can hire, we can schedule the MMPI and the physical.
Yep.
Two more steps before.
Yep, the hiring, which will go to the council, is based upon passing of a MPPI and a physical exam. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
The next item is discuss option for the City of Virginia Library to be open on Saturdays. This is at the request of Councilor Bearbu.
Have you had the opportunity to discuss this with our Nancy Maxwell?
On Friday.
Okay.
I have not had a chance to discuss.
Thank you, Councilor Bearbu.
Yeah, I went, went through this and read this, this is pretty comprehensive, and it looks quite good to me, but in order to run this by, I think we can have a discussion before the council meeting next week with Nancy. Yeah, so let's do that, and then just look forward to the council, because I don't think there's any issues that I can see.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I appreciate, I appreciate it very much for you doing this.
So we're moving that for more information for discussion at the next council meeting. Is there any further discussion from the council about this request? Okay, thank you.
The next item on the agenda, this is really just for information, too, and something for you to start thinking about. We got a notice of an increase of St. Louis County tipping fees. They actually notified us in, in October that they were going to consider it, and then we never heard anything again, and then come to find out that they have increased the tipping fees by, it's like $11 a ton.
Okay, now, they've increased these fees in 2014, 2015, 2018, and now again in 2020.
And we have not increased our fees.
What is going on here?
For the county portion since 1993.
Comments? Councilor Bearbu?
My, my comment is, I think we should reject this from the county as a city at this point in time because the notification proper, process wasn't done properly before we did our finalization of our budget. And I think that's a huge cost to the City of Virginia. I think we should oppose this, otherwise, we could go out looking for private holders eventually, if we need to, you know, to stem, and then let them have the brunt of raising fees. The only fee we raised was when we took the cans, or not the cans, the bags away, and that was a $4 increase, what, two years ago now?
And just for, just for, kind of to keep this in your back of your mind, we have about 5,000 tons we do a year.
So $15 times 5,000.
It's quite an increase. And then last, the last year, we are looking to be $24,000 in the hole in tipping fees from last year.
There's two initials I'd like to use, but I can't.
I agree with you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I agree too, Mayor.
Thank you.
For discussion, that's something we'll talk about in the future. I'll get my numbers together a little better here. I'm waiting for 2019's total report for solid waste usage, so we can have that for.
So with the increase that the county has proposed, I'm going to move that we reject from the City of Virginia this request for an increase in the tipping fees at the St. Louis County landfill. They've raised their taxes enough.
Well, the motion is, do we have any authority here? I mean, they, they're going to raise it one way or the other, right? We can reject their request. They're not just requesting, they're mandating it, right? Just write a letter saying we're very disappointed?
You know, and that's the interesting thing, is we never got a final notice. You know, and that's the interesting thing, is we never got a final notice. It's just, actually, the way I found out about it is, and I got a notice in my city in Aurora, that my bill was going up due to the county's increase in tipping fees. I went on the county's website and found that they did in fact increase it, but never gave us the final notice that it was going up.
And part of your, part of your motion, Counselor Bearbo, could that include, we craft a letter of our significant concern about the communication process, the fees, how much it's going to affect the City of Virginia, yada, 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 you know, that kind of thing?
Absolutely, we can include that in my motion.
Let's craft a response to St. Louis County, and depending upon, you know, what communications transpires, we might have to issue a public response, right?
That's right, and due to their neglect, and put in there of timely notification of their final results, because the first letter we got, Britt is absolutely correct.
Is there support for that motion? Support by Counselor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Looking forward for some more information from you on that, Britt. We are all looking for that, so any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Next item is approved change order to decrease the Alcott Park Fountain Restoration Phase 2 in the amount of $5,000.
I like that word, decrease.
Decrease is nice.
It's already moved by Counselor Freely, is there support? Support by Counselor Johnson, any further discussion? Brian, did you have anything else you'd like to add? Why there's a decrease, we don't care.
This decrease is due to the fact that we were not pleased with the quality of work that was done on the cement work up there, and we negotiated out a $5,000 decrease due to our dissatisfaction.
Very good, yeah, thank you. I know you expressed that earlier, and we were all disappointed in that. Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
And this comes as a result of your and the committee's diligence of going up there and checking.
Yes.
So, I do think, you know, that's a good thing, that as a park and rec director, that's something that you've done. We had a long time there, where our staff were doing the best they could, and this is why having you in that position has helped, because you're able to do your job, and the other staff can do their jobs more effectively. So, I just want to point that out and appreciate that, your diligence up there. I remember having that conversation with you when there was still green grass. So, appreciate this, and does this $5,000 then go into the long-term?
This was just a deduct of what we owe them in their final payment, which you will be voting on next.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moved and supported to approve the change order to decrease Alcott Park Restoration Phase 2 in the amount of $5,000, is there support? Well, moved and supported, further discussion? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, was that remedied then, the actual problem with the concrete work?
They had gone back and remedied several areas. However, we had multiple discussions that we wanted more done, they didn't feel that more needed to be done, and so we negotiated out the agreement of $5,000 for what we felt was fair. We do still have the stamps, we have all the dyes or the dye lot numbers, so in the future, if something does happen and we need to go in there and rip out a section of cement, our Public Works guys have the skills and ability to relay it, we have the stamps so that we can...
So, is it unsatisfactory currently? I guess I'm, where I'm going is, we're approving their final payment, and I don't think I would approve that unless it's...
It was unsatisfactory in the manner that when they poured the cement initially, was right as the frost was coming in, which is not the ideal time to be doing cement work. So, you had a little bit of discoloration and some, not cracking, but just, the cement did not turn out how you would like for it to have turned out. So, because of that, they did a lot of different things of resealing it and everything, trying to make us happy, and the committee stuck to their guns, and I have to applaud the fountain committee for sticking to their guns and holding our contractors' feet to the fire, so to say, to do what's in the city's long-term best interest. And the cement will hold up fine, as far as any sidewalk or cement will hold up fine here in northeast Minnesota. As frost comes in and goes out, we have that shifting, and over time, we will have cracking in any sidewalk that is poured here.
We have the ability to correct it on the city's behalf.
Yep, because we still have all of the stamps that were used to make it look like paver stones. We own those stamps, and Public Works has those stamps.
Thanks for that, I just wanted to make sure it was to your satisfaction going forward.
So, not only that, but we could use those stamps in other areas throughout the park if we wanted to.
Thank you, Brian, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Paulson. It's been moved and supported to approve the change order to the Alcott Park Restoration Phase 2 deducted by $5,000. Is there any further discussion on that item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
And the next one's approved final payout estimate number six for the Alcott Park Fountain Phase 2 to Gardner Builders in the amount of $53,620.47.
Comfortable with that?
Yes, they had initially asked for more than that, but thanks to Greg Gilnis having been on-site throughout the whole construction and taking pictures, we were able to point out an error in their billing and get this reduced down a little bit more. So, this is the final payout that will close the Phase 2 of the project.
Also move.
Moved by Counselor Bearbo, is there support? Support by Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Counselor Barnzelli?
Mayor? Thank you. That money is coming out of the, we've got that fund, right?
Yes, Virginia Community Foundation currently holds this money, so it's not coming out of the city coffers.
But from the fountain?
From the money that the fountain committee had raised, that's being held by the Virginia Community Foundation, yes. That will pay this $53,620.
Now, thank you, Counselor Barnzelli. Okay, moved and supported for the final payment, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Next item on the agenda is appointment of liaison to VEETA. We have Carl currently pointed as one of the members, but Carl also is on the safety committee, and they both meet the same days and times, one's in Eglis, though, and the safety committee's here in Virginia, so we need a different liaison. Right, Carl? The VEETA meetings are at the same time as the safety meetings?
You've opted for the safety meeting?
You did, yes.
Very good, so we need to give another appointment to VEETA? Is there any counselor that would be willing to serve? It's once a month, was it the third? The second, Thursday of the month, and this year, it's over in Eglis? Right, yeah, the safety meeting is a conflict, right? Well, we, okay, well, we can appoint another liaison. Is anybody interested in serving in that capacity? If not, I will, but does anybody want to serve? Second...
I would serve if it would be, unless another arrangement be made.
Perfect, no. Is there a motion moved by Counselor Freely, been supported by everybody else? Thank you for, thank you for agreeing to serve on that, Counselor Paulson. Moved and supported, a move by Counselor Freely, supported by, pick one, Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing special assessment against the property for blight remediation. This is a house we tore down last year, that we want to get this to the county, so that if the lot does sell, that they are notified that there's a pending assessment on it.
That the big apartment complex on the corner?
This is actually on the north side.
Well, just over the north side, bye, okay, thank you.
They do know this is coming. The property owner requested this way, that it was a blight, that blight needed to come down, the property owner asked if we put it on the taxes, if possible, and they'd like to pay it that way.
Okay, very good, makes easy meet. Counselor Paulson?
I'll move to approve.
Counselor Paulson moves to approve the resolution, is there support? Support by Counselor Johnson, further discussion? Counselor Johnson?
We are aware that it says 3274 First Street South, or the city's address on that agreement?
Thank you, and I do want to point out, there's an 8% interest on here also, so just, if everybody's comfortable with 8%, that's our standard, we usually do for blights.
Well, that's Third Street North then, right? Not south.
We'll correct that for the council meeting, yes.
Right, thank you, Counselor Johnson. Third Street North, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries, thank you.
And then the final item that I have on the agenda is review the agreement between Essentia Health and City of Virginia for purchase of real property in Virginia, and this portion of the meeting may be closed as per Minnesota statute 13D05 subdivision 3.
Motion to close? Moved. Moved by Counselor Johnson, support? By Counselor Bearbo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. The meeting, the whole meeting is now closed for discussion regarding an agreement between Essentia Health and the City of Virginia. Hello?